That one, this one. Only two rows. This one. And that one. I think you can do at least six feet apart. Nothing with the yellow or nothing that's.
What? I don't know what's supposed to look like. It's a grandma. Yeah? And like. You're the one. You don't want to do anything. I bet you're so fast. But it doesn't mean you're coming to. So, but it'll stop it a little longer. Two hours, fifteen minutes. Two hours. Cause he's not gonna edit it. Really. He said. So, all right. Getting the first file, file the default. It only does it three times. I don't defer to. I think those are the only presentation. That was. There's something about the. Oh, it's two. It can find them. Five from five. T C. That was. There's a commission. But she said she thought it was pretty much. It was a little. Even though they're a lot of them. But she said if she didn't find them. Don't worry about it. I don't know.
How you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
How are you?
I just turned the monitor off. Or like six minutes turn on. That's right.
I'm good. How are you doing?
Good. Hey, Ron. Good you.
You take an email? You know where we are?
We're gonna email everybody.
I had one that. This one.
I don't know. There's.
We don't be honest with each other. How do you not? We get to hear.
We got family members. They don't live at the same house.
Oh, my God.
At the same table. Same to me. Everybody.
Yeah. They believe in fire. The reason they test. They test people. They don't. Yeah. But that's. But everybody. Share like that.
The merchandise would be nice. Like that. You know, okay. How you doing? How you been? We're, we're, we're open and running. I'm sorry. Come on back. Thank you. County. It was. Good, good. All right. I'll. You mentioned. Did they? More than. He's on purpose again. I'm ordering ten. Everything. She's talking. Yeah. Yay. If it's on, you know, probably. I would.
Thank you.
Did you see money now? Thank you. Yeah. 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 Let's. Okay, yeah. I just wanted to be.
Go ahead.
No. This is the meeting. Got us. Four. A lot of long. We got. So. Yeah. I'm gonna worry. I'm gonna have to do that. Or. Okay. I'll be. Working. So. But I'll be. I'll be. Murdering. I think. I'll be. Really.
How are you? Yours. Okay.
I'm in uniform. I had to be. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a fucking rat. But yeah.
I'm very well over there. I'm sitting over there. I'm gonna sit over there. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I will. Come on. I'm very. Ten month old. Pretend.
I go to school.
I'll be back. I'll. I'm ready. I'm ready for the evening. I'll be. Off. Well. I'm. Good. Yeah. I'm. Actually. Hopefully. Are you in the group? I'm not good. Yeah. No. I'll be up. Yeah. Part of the way. Yes. Do it like. I mean. Yeah. So. Yeah. So. Everybody. But the last. Should. I did it. I just. Very specific. For. First. Right. I just only did. So. You actually. You were doing my drink. I'm. 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 I think it's. This man. Shit.
I'm gonna sit here.
I. This. Yeah. That was. You're on the fire. You want to eat that?
Okay.
Now. He said. I said. Oh, I'm sorry. You're. I already. See. Yeah. Yeah. Are you?
How are you? What? I don't know. I can't be on time.
We need to get a smile.
I know. Yeah.
It's now six o'clock. We call the New Kent County Board of Supervisors Meeting to, um, to order. Uh, we will have the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Tiller. Please stand.
That was correct. That was kind and gracious after all. We thank him in his beautiful day. Thank you for visiting our county. Thank you for the people that live here. People that we all. Careful. Be with us now as we conduct this meeting. See that we do it in a manner that is most pleasing to you. But he simply asked. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. United States of America. Consider Republic for which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible. And everything just as well. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Watkins, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Thank you. Um, now we're, um. I'm quite sure we reviewed our consent agenda. If any questions, comments, discussions. Um, I do want to make a note that, um. That in our consent agenda, item two B, uh, confirmation of local emergency, um, for the hurricane is Resolution R dash thirty-four dash twenty. It has been, uh, withdrawn at the request of, uh, Fire Chief Opek. So we make on a motion, we ask that, um, that you, um, make your motion with that, uh, resolution being removed.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
Wanted to make a motion, please?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and that it be made part of the record with the change under two B. Resolution R thirty-four dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. At this time, we'll have a special presentation. And, um, the New Kent County Board of Supervisors did a proclamation, um, for Jacqueline Yvette Clary Josephs. Um, she's at Randolph College and Ms. Clary Joseph was Rookie of the Year. And it reads, whereas Jacqueline Yvette Clary Josephs, a daughter of Ron, and Latoria Joseph, a twenty nineteen New Kent High School graduate, former member and vice chairwoman of the New Kent Clean County Committee, and a student at Randolph College in Lynchburg, Virginia, was named Rookie of the Year by the Wildcat Athletic Department. And whereas Ms. Clary Joseph made an immediate impact on Randolph, Randolph's cross-country and track and field programs, setting five new school records, including both cross-country distances of five K and six K, and indoor records of three thousand meter, five thousand meter, and the distant Melanie Relay. And whereas Ms. Clary Joseph became the first Wildcat to earn all conference honors at the Old Dominion Athletic Conference for Cross Country, and was a top freshman in the field and third best freshman runner in the South Southeast Region for the NCAA Region, I mean District Three, Division Three. And whereas not only was Ms. Clary Joseph impact felt on the track, but her hard work in the classroom resulted in her making the dean's list for both freshman year semesters. And whereas Ms. Clary Joseph serves as a wonderful example for her teammates and her leadership will be instrumental in the growth of Randolph College's cross-country and track and field programs. And whereas we commend Ms. Clary Joseph for her commitment to education and her dedication and performance on the Randolph College Wildcat Cross Country and Track and Field Teams. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the New Kent County Board of Supervisors on the twenty ninth day of July, twenty twenty, does hereby recognize Jacqueline Yvette Clary Joseph for her outstanding performance on the Randolph College Wildcat Cross Country and Track and Field Teams. Extends to her our deepest appreciation for all of her hard work and wishes her the best in all of her future endeavors. And this attests Rodney Hathaway County Administrator, yours truly Chairman of the New Kent County Board of Supervisors.
He can. Oh, yes, he is. So congratulations. We are so proud of you. You know, we want to give a hug. Okay. Um, so to Grandma who's watching, um, we just have coffee for her as well. And, um, the mom wants you. Do this. Just smiling under the mask.
I'm on the one right here.
Okay. And so, um, and we thank you not only for, um, being an awesome example, um, as you always have been, and we believe you always will, and we support you one hundred percent.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Miss Page. Thank you. Appreciate this a lot.
Absolutely. We love celebrating our youth. Love it, love it, love it. So next on our agenda is our citizens comment period. Thank you. First, we have Rebecca Jones, um, and Ashley Brown of One New Kent. We ask that you state your address and, um, that you have, uh, three minutes.
Hi, you guys. My name is Rebecca Jones. Um, my address is six five zero eight Washington Road. Um, this is my teammate, Ashley Brown. Thank you guys so much for having us this evening. Um, we are excited to stand before you and formally introduce ourselves. Ashley and I both are current residents of New Kent County. We both graduated from New Kent High School. Um, we are currently raising our children here and have lived here all of our lives. Together, we recently founded our group called One New Kent. We are an organization that's committed to promoting the inclusion and equality of all people and honoring, respecting, and celebrating our diversities. Our purpose is to promote awareness that there is one New Kent and that in New Kent, everyone matters. Our vision is to bring unity and inclusion to our community through healthy conversations and community interactions. With One New Kent, we are creating a safe and welcoming environment for our commu- for our tough and important community topics. We pray that we energize our community to join us and that all of you guys will do the same.
Well, my name's Ashley Brown. I reside at one four three four zero Page Road in Lenexa. Um, we would like to personally thank you all for working directly with Captain Julie McLaughlin and allowing us to hold our Prayer for Purpose March. It's the community march and the march will be held on Sunday, August the twenty-third at six P M. The march is set to begin at the middle school and it will end on the lawn of the historical courthouse. Um, the march is an act of solidarity with our community to promote inclusion and equality and love. We also plan to pray over our schools and our administrators and our families as we gear up for the twenty, twenty-two thousand, twenty-one school year. Um, we have currently secured a spiritual leader for our community prayer, two guest speakers, and we have approximately twenty volunteers to set up with distribution of masks, trash pickup, and the encouragement of social distancing. Um, we are incredibly thankful to have the full support of the sheriff's office, um, fire EMS, the school board, our county administrator, and our board of supervisors. And we are also incredibly thankful. And we are also incredibly thankful for the guidance and support of New Covenant Community Church. Without these amazing community leaders, we would not be able to make this possible, and we truly thank you. Um, if you have any questions for us, you can email us at onenewkent@gmail.com, or you can also find us on Facebook as well under One New Kent. And thank you.
Thank you. So that closes our, um, citizens comment period. And now we will move, we have public hearing at seven, so now we will move down. And Mr. Hathaway, would you like to start with your, uh, staff reports? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I do have several items to report to you on, um, this afternoon. The first item is a resolution that you have before you. Resolution R dash thirty-five dash twenty. Resolution affirming New Kent County's commitment to, e- e- excuse me, commitment to e- e- equity for its residents of all racial, ethnic, and national origins. Um, and I, I can read this. Um, I believe, uh, I was asked to prepare this in, um, hopes that you would be okay and comfortable with us presenting this resolution at the upcoming event on August twenty-third, the One New Kent, um, march. Whereas equity is important, is an important factor in individual, family, neighborhood, and community success over a number of metrics: economic, education, housing, health, and access to public facilities and essential services. And whereas the vision of New Kent County is to be a county providing exemplary, safe environment in which to live, learn, work, and play for all county residents regardless of race, ethnicity, or national origins. And whereas the New Kent County Board of Supervisors stand committed to join in efforts across our community to oppose racism, hate, and violence by strongly asserting that every person has the right to go about his or her business without fear of intimidation or harassment regardless of race, ethnicity, or national, national origins. And whereas as public servants, we have an even greater responsibility to speak out against discrimination and hatred because when the unacceptable becomes the norm in our society, human rights for all are threatened. And whereas New Kent County Board of Supervisors support the movement of One New Kent and its mission of promoting the inclusion and equality of all people and honoring, respecting, and celebrating our diversities. Now therefore, be it resolved by the New Kent County Board of Supervisors that the county of New Kent is committed to equity for its residents of all racial, ethnic, and national origins, be it further resolved, this resolution affirms the county of New Kent's commitment to advancing racial equality and additional dialogue and action in this area. Adopted this tenth day of August, twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Do we have any comments, discussions, or motion from the board? This is Mr. Lockwood.
I move that we adopt Resolution R thirty-five twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, I do have a, an additional item. Uh, this item is a request from the registrar's office, um, to purchase, uh, voting equipment to be in compliance with the upcoming November elections. Um, I recently received the information and I've emailed that to you. Um, and the request is for one hundred and twenty-eight thousand fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents uh, to purchase new voting equipment that's been mandated by the Virginia Department of Elections. Uh, and it's been mandated to meet the state security standards, uh, for voting equipment. I have checked with the State Department of Elections and inquired since this is a mandate, will there be funding uh, to follow this, for, for this purchase? And, um, I've been informed that there are no plans, uh, to be reimbursed at this time for this expenditure. Uh, Mr. Moss is here, uh, the chairman of the Board of Elections, um, to answer any questions that you may have regarding the, um, purchase. You do have the, um, sales agreement which lists the specific items and the service, uh, contracts that go along with the purchase. But the total is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Thank you, Ms. Hathaway. Any discussion? So I have some. Um, during, during the budget year, um, Mr. Moss, we, um, we talked about the possibility of the range between fifty-five thousand and seventy-seven thousand, I believe. And so, what did we miss? Please come on, sir. Thank you.
Good evening to the board.
Good evening, sir.
Madam Chairman, uh, Mr. Hathaway and the board members. Uh, your question was, uh, a comment that we, we, we made and what we were quoted at first and was suggested, um, was to not to purchase everything that's, uh, listed on the sales order. Uh, one of the things that I'm in favor and I suggested doing is not purchasing the new ballot boxes, all the cases for the new M-two-hundred voting equipment. That would save a tremendous amount of funds there. Uh, in that, uh, one hundred, what was the number?
Uh, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay. Actually, but, uh, some of the things in there is, uh, is not things that I suggested that we would, would purchase.
Well, can you give us a dollar amount? We will take it out.
Yeah, okay. Well, what, what we arrived at is one hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents. And, um, a part of, I think a part of what, uh, Mr. Hathaway is quoting is some of the maintenance agreements and, um, and the upgrades to, uh, actually the, the new, uh, cases for the equipment and new ballot boxes and those, those type of things. But as I see, we don't need new ballot boxes or, or we don't need the, uh, the cases for the, the new M-two-hundred. So I don't have a, a broken down, uh, number for you of what we would exclude, but what I see is necessary for us is, uh, and I guess the board's going to think, uh, be upset with me. I'm talking about the board election, but what I see as, as being needed is, uh, the essential things and the cost of that is a hundred and eleven, six, twelve, seventy-five.
Madam Chair, um, I, I would like to comment from my discussions with Karen, um, the, the registrar, excuse me. Um, one hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents is the cost of the equipment. Um, but on page five, there's also some maintenance fees and li- software licenses, um, and support fees. Uh, the total additional sixteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars, and that's where the total comes from. Um, the equipment plus the maintenance fees and li- software licenses and support. And that fee is breaking, broken out on Schedule A one, page five of your, your handout.
And Madam Chairman, just to clarify, one thing about the conversation you had about between fifty-five and seventy-five thousand, um, at the time, we didn't know that they were required to get a new Audemars. So we have to purchase eleven Audemars, and they, they are separate Audemars that we have that, uh, allows the disabled, the blind, and the deaf, and impaired, and so forth to vote. So we have to purchase, uh, eleven of those also. So I think that's the difference in, in the, uh, amount that we, we just saw before.
Do we have any other questions from any other board members?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Rodney, it looks like the, um, we're, we're looking at the additional software and support and all that. Eleven thousand one seventy-five, that's for a total of three years for those maintenance agreements? So is that covering the equipment or, and software, or is that everything inclusive?
It, it, it's my understanding that yes, that covers the software and equipment. Um, well, that sixteen thousand four forty is broken down into two areas. Eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars covers the maintenance on all the hardware. Uh, the software license, the software license maintenance and support is five thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars. The total is sixteen four forty. And that is, that fir- that price is for three years.
Okay.
Is mandated by the state?
It's, it's mandated by the state, and with the new election laws as far as the early elections, uh, time is of the essence. Um, being that early voting begins, I believe, early September.
Four to five days.
And, yes. Um, the vendor has told us if we can get the purchase order in tomorrow, um, he can guarantee delivery by the end of this month. Um, yeah.
That, that is very necessary because we have to train a lot of people on the new equipment. So we do need to, in a proper.
Okay. Any other questions? Chair is ready for motion.
Madam Chair.
This is Mr. Lockwood.
I move to appropriate one hundred and twenty-eight thousand fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents from the capital fund balance for the purchase of voting equipment mandated by the Virginia Department of Elections.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Um, one thing I'd like to say before I call for the vote, um, we, I don't know when this came down, um, when these costs came down, but when we get this sum of money at, at this time, as I said, this late in the game, um, it, um, it puts us in a difficult situation. I would ask my request of the registrar's office is that, um, we do things in a more timely manner so that we can, um, so that we're not last minute, get it in by eleven o'clock at night so we can get the equipment and whatever else we need, and it gives us more time to, um, to, um, research our requests. So that's my request to the registrar's office. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Steers? Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Moss, for being here.
Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, one final item. Um, with, with, with good news, uh, we have Fire Chief O'Pat here to, um, inform us of a new grant that, that we've received.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Hathaway. Well, as Mr. Hathaway has stated, I come to you with good news. Um, back in late March, early April, when COVID nineteen, the coronavirus hit us, um, as you know, um, we didn't know what to expect, what to plan for. And we were purchasing our PPE and, uh, putting this aside under our declaration as we normally do. Uh, shortly after that, the FEMA DHS put out a small, very quick turnaround grant opportunity for fire departments around the country, which they called Assistance to Firefighters Grants Supplemental. Very similar to the, the process we did for the Assistance to Firefighters Grants. However, this was a quick down and dirty, you know, what did you spend for PPE for COVID nineteen? And back at that time, back in, uh, early April, late April, uh, we spent eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Or actually a little bit more than that. So we put in for that thinking, oh, wow, this is great. We're going to be done here. After this goes away, we'll get our money back and go back to normal. Not so much. So, uh, we received word this week that, uh, they did, uh, are, are willing to refund us the total amount. Uh, we do have a very small match. That match is one thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, and that match will come out of our operating budget for emergency management. And, uh, we'd like to, I'm asking you to, to accept the grant so we can move on and, um, uh, take care of this, uh, first initial purchase of PPE through the grant.
Thank you, Chief O'Pat.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Chief, uh, does this impact our money that we're getting from the CARES Act? And is it separate funding, so are we going to have to make up that money elsewhere?
Yes, sir. We, we set this aside when we were planning for the CARES Act, when CARES Act came in after this. We kind of set this aside knowing that we already wrote for this so that we didn't sup- or we didn't, uh, supplant any grant funds. So we put this aside so there's no impact on the CARES, uh, funding at all on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions, if not the chairs? Um, we need a motion on this to accept the grant?
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, Chief O'Pat, the name of the grant is?
This is the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, uh, supplement, supplement.
Okay. Uh, so the motion would be, uh, moved to accept the Assistance to Firefighter Grant?
Supplement.
Supplement.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Page?
So moved.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That concludes my report.
All right. Um, now we'll move on to our elected officials' report. Um, Mr. Lockwood?
Thank you, Ms. Page. Um, we have had, um, some assistance from VDOT in the Tabernacle Road area the last couple of weeks. Uh, they did some, uh, shoulder repair and, and did a, a really good job kind of cleaning up a really dangerous stretch of road where almost a third of the road had disintegrated. So they did a really great job. I just want to commend them for that. Uh, they're supposed to be back in the area. Of course, the weather has put everybody behind the eight ball, but I definitely want to give a shout out to VDOT for that. And also for VDOT and Dominion, I know a lot of folks had trouble with their power going out. Uh, some people for days, but when you consider the fact that over five hundred thousand people across the state of Virginia were impacted, I think it was pretty amazing that they got everybody's power restored in, in a matter of days. So I, I just want to thank them for that. Um, I also want to just acknowledge the incredible community spirit that I witnessed on Saturday at the Back the Blue Rally. Um, the turnout was incredible. They had every, it looked like everybody in New Kent drove by there honking their horn to support our incredible sheriff's office. And, uh, I was, I was just really honored to be there and witness the community spirit that occurred. So, um, lastly, I have the, uh, announcement that the Proclaiming Grace Jenna Bash was postponed from August 1st. It is now going to be August 15th. The coronavirus kind of put a wrinkle in their plans. So from eleven to three o'clock on Proclaiming Grace Outreach's Facebook page, which is Proclaiming Grace Outreach, uh, they will be conducting their Jenna Bash telethon. Uh, I'm sure it'll be a great time. I know Ms. Page will be participating and, uh, I just want to thank the community for their support for Proclaiming Grace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Mr. Steers?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Um, I too like to thank VDOT and Dominion Power because of what we went through this past week. And I had numerous calls, which I'm sure my colleagues had the same thing in their district. But, um, uh, most of the issues have been resolved. There, we have a couple more that we're still working on, but I salute the, uh, Dominion Power and, uh, VDOT for, you know, take, taking care of the problems in a expedited way. So I, I would like to thank them for that. Other than that, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yes, I'd also like to, uh, thank Dominion Power as well. And, I mean, I feel really fortunate that we were only without power for ten hours. And, um, even though I did have some constituents, constituents calling my neighborhood complaining that it was taking too long, um, to get power. But I feel like Dominion did a fantastic job. And I spoke with, um, Crystal Bright with Dominion, and she was very helpful. Uh, she kept me up to date on progress as it was going along. Not just in, in the Bottoms Bridge area about, but throughout New Kent County. So my hat's off to Dominion Power for that. And I know Rick didn't say anything when it was up here, but I know they had a couple of good days last week as well in the, um, Emergency Services Department. So kudos to the fire rescue. That's all.
I don't have anything.
So, um, as, as I've said, and I'm going to continue to say until, um, until we start doing a better job of it, um, I just ask, um, please, ma'am, and please, sir, with everything that we're going through, um, hopefully, um, closure and, and the slowdown of a pandemic. Um, I know everybody's concerned about your kids going back to school. I know that we have a plate full, but I ask that everybody remember that everybody has a plate. So just be kind, um, and extend extra patience. And as we always say, you know, you got to love them anyhow. You just got to love each other anyhow. We are New Kent Strong, so I ask that we do it in kindness and respect to everyone. Um, so we thank, um, I know the Sheriff's Department was up there cutting trees. Uh, we had flooding going on. And so, um, we have really gone through a year, but, um, through it all, we'll get through this together. So we thank everyone and I thank the board members for, um, just being on top of constituents in the county as a whole. And so with that being said, uh, we still have a little time. Um, can we go to close session now? Do you have a statement?
Part of the statement that I gave.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Steers?
I move to convene in closed session pursuant to Virginia Code, Section two point two dash three seven one one A Y for the discussion of confidential health information involving protection of the privacy of individuals and personal matters not related to public business.
Thank you, Mr. Steers, Ms. Watkins.
Mr. Evelyn?
May I just add, for the record, that's, that should have been two point two dash three seven one one A four of the Code of Virginia. Just a correction.
I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney, I was reading what I was presented with.
Understood.
Ms. Watkins?
Uh, Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Hi. Um, we are going into closed session. We will be back out. Our public hearing will start at seven o'clock, so we will reconvene then. Thank you.
Hey, what are you doing?
I didn't hear it.
Harvey looks like a train driver.
Yeah, but thanks.
Hello, hello.
You can hear it out there?
I can hear it a little bit. I think it's one of those ones you gotta talk into.
See, Roddy walks, he walks right by United.
Oh, how you doing? How you doing? Good to see you, good to see you. I saw you guys on Facebook. It looked like Saturday was very important. Yeah, yeah. That is so true. How you doing? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Uh huh, I'm assuming that.
See, I've been missing my phone. I was gonna say something. You guys ever really?
I have seen you since you got left.
Yeah. Well, I think so.
This is a really, that's a dog.
I'm dog park, thirty park. The wind's coming the wrong way where I live. I'm sitting like, well, my dogs can start more here. But I'm not the one. I look into charts and look at it, and it's me.
I think we'll find it.
So whiskey's, gentlemen, so I know when they look funny. So they were here?
Um.
I heard there was some discussion.
They go, where does it be there?
Was it, would they start about track? I mean, you know, single family houses ten people per day. Um. He was an athlete. Little rugby business, right now. Couple bars.
No.
Oh, it's deep. When I saw they like to be seventy-five feet.
Oh, they keep that over there.
I'm like, no. They're gonna blow all the metal off. I don't see any hard conditions.
Are you alright?
Hundred fifty from a resident's all the way. I even thought that was a bottle.
I had a nice, it wasn't too bad last week. I was, I was almost knocked underwater. If you're not sure, you're not working. Yeah. Burned the midnight all Saturday. Yeah.
Interstate ramps, we move off.
Then I go beach Sunday. Beach, Thursday night eleven. And wire. Then we had, I had to stop. It was down in the middle of the marriage. They're a whole, yeah, they're a whole very big yard.
I feel sorry for us.
It's just, it's a good problem. It's way more stressful. Definitely doesn't want to see me. Yeah.
I don't want the well to set me.
My daughter's house is my son. Yeah, yeah.
Sixty-five, that's where it's kind of buried.
Four acres. My daughter.
That's what we, we're in. Five more hours. I want, whatever you're asking.
And the like.
The chance of one of us to get in the lot.
Yeah.
It's like a, it's like a hyper.
Hair could be this long.
It smells.
There was some.
It's the same thing with the lawn.
Well, yeah. She wrecked her son.
It was so much.
Glittering. I just thought it was just like. Is Dan running down the rest of? Let's go to the. Uh, we're. Yeah.
How are you?
I'm good. I know David's gone.
I was okay.
I think he's.
The house is, he's heard about the police thing.
He's a man. I didn't have him in my mind if I get him. Look, we're filming. He's still like. It's not just about you. Yeah. Yeah. That's what they mean to me. Hey, how you doing? How you doing?
I give mine anyway. Dollar store, I don't care. As long as it got the green bag. Board of Supervisors now called back to order. Um, we had a statement to come out of closed session, please.
Madam Chair, I'm moved to come back into open session.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
Whereas the New Kent County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative record, recorded vote, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where section. My glasses fogged up. Whereas section two point two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the board that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now there'd be a resolve that the board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open session requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed session to which the certification resolution applies and only public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
It's now seven o'clock, so we will start with our first public hearing, which is seeking comments on the issuance and the sale up to three mi- three million one hundred fifty thousand principal amount of water and sewer revenue bonds and providing for the form, for the farm, form, form details and payment there, uh, resolution R dash thirty-three dash twenty. And that is Mr. Mike Lang.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, at the previous work session, we discussed the funding options of the Route six eighteen water line. Um, the water line is now nearly complete. Uh, the second phase, the modifications and demolition at Colonial Downs will begin this month, and so we are ready to, uh, close on the loan with the VRA. And as we discussed, we got a very favorable rate of one percent. Uh, the bids came in well under what we had budgeted, so, um, we have recommended a fifteen-year loan at one percent. We think the loan amount will not exceed two point two million.
Have, um, discussion from the board?
No, uh, I don't. That's a, that's a pretty good interest rate, though. Mike, good job there. One percent.
The circumstances are unfortunate, but our timing was great, yeah.
If there's no other discussion, I have a motion.
Do we gotta open a public hearing? You taught me that, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Thank you.
Everybody sign up for public hearing, sir? Thank you. No one signed up for public hearing, so we'll close public hearing. Mrs. Ste-
Hello?
Okay, you have something to say?
Oh, uh, Mr. Lang, I was just gonna say that since Larry Dame is not here, I would just like to reiterate that I, I do every time we discuss, anytime we make any changes, you know what that's gonna be?
I hear ya.
This is events we're gonna reduce the water rates for our citizens.
Yes, this, uh, under budget for our future, um, utility budget, so.
Thank you, sir. Where's that?
Yay. We ready for motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Evelyn?
I move to authorize the county administrator to sign the agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn? Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two, public hearing, uh, CUP dash zero one dash two zero, Pocahontas Center Retail and Mini Storage Resolution R dash thirty dash twenty. Ms. Kelly Ledoux?
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm gonna give a brief presentation, and then Mr. Daniel would also like to address the board. Uh, Mr. Mark Daniel has requested a conditional use permit to construct a retail establishment greater than thirty thousand square feet and a mini storage warehouse on a portion of property located on Pocahontas Trail and Bottoms Bridge. The parcels located between the VCU Emergency Center and Saint Elizabeth Anne Seaton Catholic Church. The applicant proposes to develop approximately eight to ten acres of the fifty-acre property with a retail center, including shopping, possible grocery, retail, and restaurant along the front of the property with a mini storage facility behind the retail area. Preliminary layout plans show six mini storage buildings as well as an office for the storage use. Layout and conceptual plans for the retail area are included in your packet. The subject property is zoned business and is surrounded by similarly zoned property, several other businesses, and the Patriots Landing community across Route sixty to the north. The application was reviewed by all county reviewing agencies as well as VDOT. There were some comments that will need to be addressed, especially regarding access to the property should the use permit be granted and the project move to the site plan stage. The zoning ordinance lists specific performance standards for mini storage facilities which will apply to this project. The property is also located in the Bottoms Bridge Overlay District. The standards for review of conditional use permits are set forth in section ninety-eight dash seven forty-four of the county code and are also listed in your staff memo. There are ten suggested conditions listed in resolution R dash thirty dash twenty. These conditions will assist in addressing, protecting, and promoting health, safety, and the general welfare of New Kent County citizens. The Planning Commission considered this application at their meeting on July twentieth and voted seven to three to forward a recommendation of approval with the conditions. Staff also recommends approval of a conditional use permit. Staff has received a request from the applicant for a few changes to conditions three and eight. Mr. Daniel will explain this during his presentation. I believe you got a copy of those also. I'll be here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ledoux. Mr. Daniel, did you wish to say anything?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the audience, uh. I'll speak really loud. How about that? Okay, so anyway, I'm Mark Daniel. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's an honor to be with you. Um, uh, this is a, a vision that I have, um, I proposed, uh, to, to build, uh, something in New Kent that would offer some choices to our citizens. I love my, uh, my grocery store. I like the people that I go to, but it's one, uh, player in this marketplace, and I'm specifically interested in, in finding another one. Um, I've been in contact with several different, uh, people who are in that business, and I don't have any commitment from any of them, so it takes quite a leap of faith to, to propose what I wanna do. Um, I've talked to the engineers that have designed a project that I really like. It's the Brandy Creek Shopping Center there, Mechanicsville, where the, where the Publix is, but I'm not trying to mention them for a brand. I don't have any commitment from them, but I like everything I see there. I like, uh, someday when I'm gone away, that people would walk up and say, Mark did this, and be very proud of it. If you go look at that, that, that facility and the, the engineers that designed it, it's just state of the art. The parking, um, places are at an angle. I can never get my car in, or my truck especially, when I go into a right angle one. Uh, they've got parking right in front of the stores for handicaps, so people can get out and go right into them. It's just great. It's a lot of stone. I like that. That's what I see. That's my vision. Um, but again, I don't wanna mislead anyone, one. And also, um, I'm in the storage business. I was the, we had the, the oldest storage facility that I know of here in the county, and so, um, the idea, if you go look at the one that I have currently on two, on two forty-nine, all the storage buildings are in the rear, and it's meant so that, uh, once that the, the, the front, uh, develops and you have your commercial buildings that you not necessarily have to see the storage facility. Some people, that, that seems to be, uh, uh, an issue with. So, with, with that in mind, you know, I had an engineer draw up, um, the picture of the building in the front, uh, or the buildings, and I have been in discussion with folks. It won't just be, it's my vision, and that's all I have at this point, a vision and a plan and, and daring and dashing. But I've talked to people who would like to put maybe a family-style restaurant, maybe an Italian restaurant, and some other shops, and I, I propose to have that done there and designed to give the, the, the citizens of New Kent choice. Um, the two things that I asked to be changed, uh, we've had, uh, in some engineering work done. The, the people who own the property had some engineering done with, uh, Guardian Associates, uh, but we haven't had it confirmed, so we have a, an approximation of the lines, but we don't, that is not nailed, uh, to the ground. But again, um, I, I, I propose, the original, uh, ten conditions said that, that, that storage facility couldn't be any closer than three hundred and fifty feet to the frontage. I asked that that be moved to three hundred feet, 'cause I don't know that we'll need it, but it would be a shame to do it and then, and be short, you know, fifty feet and have to come back and do all this again. And three hundred feet is a football field. In other words, it's gonna be a football field behind, um, um, the road, if you will. So that's the first change from three fifty to three hundred. And the other thing that I, I'd ask that you give me some, um, consideration with, uh, um, it was placed into the, the package. And the other thing that I, I'd ask that you'd give me some, um, consideration with, uh, um, it was placed into the, the package, a phasing plan. And so, the phasing plan said that we wouldn't build this, the storage facility until we built the, the, uh, the retail area. And again, I'm not trying to mislead anyone, and I said this at the planning commission level. I don't have a commitment. So, um, it'd be like going to the, to the Cadillac dealership and saying, I want the most expensive car you get, you have, and as soon as you give it to me, I'm gonna go get a job. Um, I don't think that, um, I could, uh, finance it under those conditions. So, I, I'll offer as, um, a substitute, maybe something that would mitigate this. If someone has some sort of a, uh, of an issue that they don't wanna see the mini storage, um, we won't clear the front until, uh, we have a commitment for the commercial. And then there's been one other, uh, theory, I guess, I'm hearing. People say, well, you're not gonna build, you might not ever build a commercial. Let me just tell you, if you go on Route sixty and look, you go in that corridor, that's just past the hospital. That's the next spot. There are no more spots. I propose to you that had that been developed, or someone engineered it, there already had been businesses there. But it's a great leap of faith between, you know, a piece of dirt and a beautiful Brandy Creek Shopping Center. And so, i- i- if you will, if you'll indulge me, if you follow these markets, everything is contracting. It's not gonna be an easy thing to go out there and borrow. This won't be hundreds of thousands of dollars. This'll be in the millions. So, um, that's, and, and, and if you had to, 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 to make a, a financial gamble, now would, now would probably not be the time to do it. So when you go to, to a lender and you say, I propose to build these beautiful things, the reality of the situation is, is I think I can do it if you don't, um, require that phasing that, that I can't build this, the storage facility, 'cause I know that part of the business. But I will do, um, what I proposed to mitigate it, is to, um, agree not to clear the, the front of it, so you wouldn't see it anyway. So, uh, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Lockwood?
Madam Chair, uh, yes, Mr. Daniels. I was just curious, uh, it shows, if I'm looking at this site plan correctly, a fifty-foot setback with the property along Elizabeth Anne Seaton Church. Is that going to be a cleared setback, or was that gonna be a screen of trees?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, there's a nice church there. Been there for a longer years, and I'm wondering if you've had any conversation with them or if you're planning on having some sort of physical visual barrier between the, the mini store and the side of the...
Right. It's already in the county ordinance that you have to have, um, barriers all the way around the storage. That, that is more, um, to show people that, that fifty feet, well, no matter what, we would have an entrance back there that would be fifty feet. It wouldn't be twenty feet, 'cause some people try to do that, save land. And I, I went to the, um, Catholic brother, uh, twice, and, and I tried to meet with him, told him what I was gonna do. And, um, I haven't heard any contact back from them, but, so I don't, I don't have any, any understanding that they would be, uh, adverse to it. But I don't know, but I actually made two trips over there, knocked on the door, and left a note.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
Mr. Daniel, I know you'd said that you would leave the current foliage trees-
Yeah.
-in sight, uh, intact until later. The drive that you have to put in would be the only, obviously, I guess, the only trees that you would take down necessary to get the road cut in?
Yeah.
And no wider than the road itself really needs to be, I guess?
Well, we have to put, and you have to clear something for your entrance, of course, and you have to have someplace for the sign, because you just can't absolutely hide it, so people have gotta know something. But aside from that, that's all I would, done aside there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mr. Daniels. Thank you. Now open a public hearing? Thank you. First, we have Mr. Paul Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
Members of the Board of Supervisors, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I'm Paul Robinson. I'm a real estate broker in Providence Forge in New Kent. I represent, uh, the Smith Deal family, who owns that property. It's held in the name of Robert, uh, Robert T. Smith Deal and, uh, the William T. Smith Deal Living Trust. Uh, Mr. William T. Smith Deal and his wife Nancy Smith Deal are here with us this evening. They've driven down from Fredericksburg to, uh, uh, witness the proceedings in consideration of the board to the proposed, uh, conditional use permit and, uh, your resolution, uh, that is before you, R thirty twenty. So, uh, the Smith Deal family has owned the property since nineteen eighty-nine. Any of you know me, know I always seem to go back a little bit in history with things, unfortunately, but, uh, I, uh, I did look it up that, uh, coincidentally, uh, their late father bought the property in nineteen eighty-nine from, uh, Mr. Willie Daniel, father of Mark Daniel, so it's, uh, it's a coincidence that now he's, uh, he's before us, uh, seeking the, uh, the use permit to, uh, to try to, uh, develop this property. As a real estate broker, I'm representing the family, trying to sell it. We do have a contract with, uh, an entity owned by Mr. Daniel or controlled by Mr. Daniel. And, uh, certainly, the, the Smith Deals have joined in the application, endorsed the application, indicating that they certainly are supportive of and desirous of, of this, uh, use permit being granted. It, uh, would go without saying that they, uh, they would, would support it, and we do hope that you'll give favorable consideration to, uh, its passage and its passage with, uh, the amendments that, uh, Mr. Daniel has requested, uh, to items three and eight. Uh, particularly in item three, with his, uh, his proffer or indication of willingness to proffer not clearing the land in the front, uh, leaving it wooded and buffered from, uh, US Route sixty. That certainly creates a greater buffer than we witnessed with most commercial-type developments, uh, throughout New Kent County and particularly with any of the, uh, the mini warehouse-type developments throughout the county. So it will be very well buffered in the event that, uh, uh, construction of the front retail complex is delayed or in the event that it never occurred. We find that, uh, review of the comprehensive land use plan suggests that this proposed land use certainly is consistent with the goals and objectives set forth in the land use plan, uh, whether it be economic development, protection of our natural environment, or the furtherance of, uh, development, uh, of, of a commercial tax base to relieve the burdens on the, the residential property owners and to provide additional services in the county. So we feel that, uh, with consistency of the land use plan, we, we, uh, certainly have no problem endorsing the project and, and certainly hope that you will consider granting the, the exceptions as requested to, uh, to items three and eight that are before you tonight. I thank you very much for your consideration and happy to try to answer any questions if I may.
Any questions of Mr. Robinson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No one else signed up, so we'll close our public hearing. Do we have any discussion or comments from our board?
Madam Chair? Uh, I do have a issue with number eight. I think that really needs to be in there. I think it probably needs to be a little stronger. Uh, I think once you start putting these mini, if you put them in there, I think in three to five years, probably be back here putting, asking for that, uh, for that commercial space to be gone. I know the area is very wet, but I do think the commercial needs to be done before the mini storage. If that's in there, I'm okay with it, but I believe that the commercial space, uh, needs of, at least started and engineered before the, uh, mini storage starts. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Any other discussion? Mr. Steers?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Daniel, you said you, you reached out to several, uh, grocery store chains, but really made, didn't really make any direct contacts or anything, any establishment of, was it just a phone call saying, hey, I got some property I'll develop? You know, give me a call if you're interested?
Well, right now, because of the COVID situation, everything is in a stop.
Right.
Nobody's making any plans to spend any big money. But there's several, several, um, companies that have expressed an interest of being in this market. And not that I don't like the ones that we have, but when I go in, there's only one pack of bacon, so, you know, I want some competition, so the answer is yes.
Right. Well, I totally support that. I, you know, we need something besides what we already have. Um, but, you know, eighteen months ago, I reached out to Publix out of Lakeland, Florida, spoke with Mary Dobbins, and just recently spoke with Melissa Conley and Michael Leach, and they are the ones who developed this area with Publix, so-
Spoke to all of them, yes, sir.
If you are fortunate enough to go forward, uh, if you haven't spoken to them, I would advise you to, to, 'cause th- those are the ones who make the decision.
Right.
Uh, I've also reached out to Kroger. Uh, we have a Kroger site submission number one eight seven zero, but they haven't responded. But they're out of, um, Cincinnati, Ohio, so that might be another lead you could follow up on.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I, I totally agree with you. We need something besides the food line, you know? And, um, so if you're fortunate enough to get this, I, I would ask if you, you know, I, I could help sit with you and talk to these people.
Madam Chairman, can I speak to, to this, this one concern that was made while I'm up here? And, and again, I'm not trying to be ugly, and I'm not trying to be, you know, uh, trick, tricky. But if you make it a requirement that I have to build that store before I do the storage facility, you might as well just vote no for it, because I've already had this discussion. You know, the, the people who will lend me that money will not do that, that, but I'll be able to find, unless you're ready to lend me the money. So it'd be better for you to vote no. I will not, I cannot go forward with that, um, exception, that, that one preceded the other. And I don't really see the, the purpose in it, because both are, are allowed, uh, by rights, um, in this, in the district and, and the goals and objectives. One just requires, um, a conditional use permit. So, again, I'm not trying to be ugly, but if, if you make that a condition, you should vote no, 'cause I will not be able to borrow the money, and will not, I won't be able to go forward.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hathaway?
Madam Chair, um, as I read condition eight, um, and I guess I'm addressing this question to our county attorney as well, um, because I'm not sure that the requirement of condition eight gets, achieves the comments that was mentioned recently, uh, or previously, um, regarding prohibiting the construction of the mini storage, um, prior to the construction of the, um, commercial facility. In that, as I read this, it states that a phasing plan, um, shall be required at the time the site plan is submitted. Um, but it really doesn't do more than that than require a phasing plan. Am I, am I reading that correctly, Brendan? Um, and I bring that up to, s- to inform the board, if we truly want, um, the mini storage to not begin construction until you attend the CO, uh, for the commercial building, we may need to revise, uh, the condition in number eight. I'm not sure that, the way I read it, it, it gets us there.
I think you're right, Mr. Hathaway. I think that requirement includes the obligation to, for, for the applicant to submit a phasing plan, and the intent of it is to ensure that construction of, uh, the retail portion of the site will be completed prior to completion of the mini storage portion of the site. But it, it only really reads to say a phasing plan shall be submitted. I certainly agree that if you wanted to make it clear that the mini storage couldn't start until after construction began or a CO was issued, that you should include that language, if that's what the intent is. I, I also think you could clarify, um, what the retail portion of the site consists of. I don't know whether that's, it's, it mentions above there that it's a thirty thousand, it's over thirty thousand feet of retail space, but you might just wanna be clear what that is, if, if that's what you want.
Ms. Evelyn?
Uh, Mr. Daniels, how much preliminary work is Guardi done? Piece property?
Plenty. The, the, the engineering work, um, by the Guardian Associates to, to determine, uh, since that's a fifty-acre site and a lot of it's, is wet, uh, but they've done the engineering work and waiting to confirm. But I'm just gonna tell you something, you know, it was with regards to, uh, uh, let me answer your question first. Forgive me, that was rude of me. Um, I've had an engineer go back and fit the, the buildings on the, the site. I've had him fit the parking on the fi- site. And it is specific at the planning commission level, I said a, I think a fifty thousand square foot building. That, that is in, that was in there. I don't know where the, where, what happened to it, but that was in our submission. And that is, that's because all of these people I've talked to said, if we can't have a building big enough to put our product line in, we're not gonna do it. So, I mean, that's in there. That, you could be specific. It's fifty thousand square foot. And again, I'm, I'm sorry.
Is this what Guardi, what's in our application that what Guardi drew?
That was done by, um, an engineer and firm. I can't see what you got. I can't, I can't hear and I can't see.
Was just what the mini-
Part of the application?
Yes, that's conceptual. That's conceptual, but I had an engineer and firm go back, and those, those, all those things will fit in the, in the, the footprint that we have. But again, you don't know till you have it confirmed, and so I'm ready to do that.
So you ha- you have some information from the engineer that says that?
I'm sorry?
You have information from the engineer that says it?
You have. It's right there. You're showing it to me. That was given to me by them.
It's not even signed by engineer, though.
Well, I'm not telling you that I ha- excuse me. I'll answer. I'll wait for you to finish, and I'll answer. Go ahead.
But I'm just saying, the engineer told you it could fit on there, but, I mean, all this is a plat there, isn't it?
How many people have you had come forward and asked to do a ten thou- or ten million or a five million dollar grocery store, uh, lately? And I'll tell you, this exact process has gone on once before, and there was one proposed at Tunstall Road in two forty-nine. And they went through a year negotiation, came to this very podium at this very site, and after all that work, they were turned down. I couldn't stand up financially to that. This is, let me tell you something. This is not something, uh, entering too lightly. You should vote no if it bothers you. Vote no. Go on, do it, because I will not be able to borrow the money. If you say the phasing has to, to, to be in place and one must be built in front of the other, there's no precedent for it. You can do it. But that's tantamount to saying no, which is, I wish that you would do that, 'cause I'm gonna be truthful with you. It cannot be done otherwise. I can't do it.
I, I, I don't, I don't know the, I, I hear what you're saying, but I guess because I don't know the word no. I don't know why it can't be. Um, I, I truly don't. I, I will express my concerns, and my concerns are that, um, we get a mini storage and then we can't get the tenants. I mean, I, I hear the explanation of that, that property and Bottoms Bridge. I know what, um, another property across the street, um, the length of time it took them to get tenants in their building, and they had the building constructed. And so that causes concern. Um, I know that mini storage has to be a booming business, because they're all over the county. So, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind. But at the end of the day, it, because of the business, is probably a need. But then we talk about a greater need, so to entice with, um, the possibility of a grocery store or other shops. And then the picture of what we're seeing in other shops, I, I, I'm gonna tell you, I don't feel comfortable with it. Um, I'd... That's how, that's why I am with this. I, I'm be very honest with you.
Can I just say, Madam Chairman, that every dollar that comes, um, to this, uh, county from a business is one less that has to come from the homeowners? I'm sure every month, y'all hear it, how we spend this money. Hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for the, uh, earlier for the, uh, Board of Elections. Every day, people come to you with money, money, money. You know what? When projects come to you with houses, that costs you money. I'm proposing to take a chance to bring you something that has no downside to you, besides if your, your, uh, uh, concern is, is that it might not happen. You know, once this is approved, that's gonna be, um, in the corridor with utilities, water and sewer, and be able to build these things that you proposed, or you say in your own kind of, um, plan, you, that you want. Every dollar that comes from a business helps you. You need them. The, the millions were spent on that Bottoms Bridge corridor to do exactly what I'm- to do exactly what I'm proposing to bring to you tonight. So, I'm just a little confused. If that's not the goal, then maybe we should, you, you should, I don't know what the statement should be. Um, I understand that you have some, some people might have some reservations about a mini storage, but you have proven homes eleven, twelve hundred at a time that don't have garages on them. So, and have you been to, have you ever seen a storage facility that went up for sale for receivership? Have you seen one fail? No one could build them if they weren't necessary, and they didn't provide a service, right? I mean, it's not a hand grenade factory. Um, so, like, um, I just ask you to consider, if you'd like to see something nice there, I have the vision, and I'm willing to try. This is not a time that I would advise trying it. But if that's what you, uh, require, I would ask that you vote no, because I will not be able to borrow the money, and I won't be able to go forward. And I've already talked to, to, to people about this. And as, and as long as it's, there's woods in front of it, and you can't see it, what could possibly be the issue? Normally, there's a room full of people here, um, with anything. You're going to see something later tonight, something small, and you got five or six well-meaning people. Where are the people? If this was such a bad, where are they to, to, to oppose this? I don't understand it. So, I thank you for your time and consideration, but you should say no if that's going to be the requirement, because I won't be able to do it.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Ms. Mrs. Steers?
So, let me understand what you're saying. If we require you to put the mini storage in first, without clearing the land, and with a timeframe to build the commercial property, if we allow you to do that, you won't, you won't go forward with it?
I'm confused with your question. Say that again, rephrase that?
All right, the whole piece of property?
Yes.
You want to build the mini storage in the back?
Yes.
Three, three fifty, or three hundred now, still three fifty?
Well, it, it probably will be at least that anyway.
And that's okay.
Rather be flexible. Yes, sir.
But if we approve that, and you do not clear the front part of that property until you have a tenant who wants a, a fifty thousand square foot building, if we go that route, then you don't want us, you want us to vote no?
Oh, no, 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 I could do that, but I'm saying, um, I misspoken. Forgive me.
Or maybe I misunderstood you. I'm sorry.
All I'm saying is that I know that I can get the funding to do the, the storage facility, which will, uh, make the whole project begin. If I go to someone and say, I want the money to build a fifty thousand square foot store, they're going to say, you got to be kidding me, right? Because I don't, I mean, yeah, but, on the other hand, if that had been developed, there would already be something there. It hasn't been developed. There hasn't been any engineering work done until, until this, 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 uh, this venture. If you want to see something nice, I'm just asking, I mean, I've got the vision. What, I don't see a downside. What possibly, um, if you don't want to see the storage facility, it's already in the county code that you have to have it. Buffer it all the way around, it's already there. Nothing that we can do that's not already written and, and has the force of law. We're going beyond that and saying, okay, well, we'll leave the woods there. If that, that's what you want to see, fine. But I cannot tell you that if, that I can go somewhere and, and find someone who would give me the money to build a building that size without just an ironclad commitment. Let's take it one step further. But you're going to have eight acres on the highway, in the corridor, with water, with sewer, zoned, with the building that will facilitate what these people are telling me, one after another, they have to have. I mean, if you've got any faith in New Kent at all, that should be enough.
My question becomes this. My question becomes, then if what you want is a mini storage, then why didn't you apply for a mini storage?
Well, you know, um, Madam Chairperson, I do, and I know that, but that's not all that can go there, right? I didn't, I didn't understand at the beginning of this would be so hard. I thought everybody would be saying, yeah, I want to, I'd like to have a nice, uh, shopping center. And, and the mini stores, stores can go behind it. I've already, I've, not only am I proposing that, I've already done it. You can go look at what I've got already.
I've seen what you got already. Um, so, but that's still not my question. My question becomes, if a mini storage is what you want, then why didn't you apply for a mini storage?
Because it's an opportunity to, to give more to the citizens of New Kent.
If the commercial slab or the commercial, the shopping center is what you want, then why didn't you apply for that? Then what becomes the issue?
It never was an issue until someone said, we would want you to build one in front of the other. And again, there's no, there's no reason for it. I don't understand the reason. And my purpose of, has always been to give more choices to the citizens of New Kent. But this, 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 you know, it doesn't need to be something that, to fuss about. If you feel that strongly about it, you should say no, because that'll be tantamount to me not being able to do the project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any more questions or discussions?
Uh, Ma- Madam Chair, could I ask you to come back? Let, let's say that you got the, uh, uh, storage units built, three hundred feet from the, uh, frontage on sixty.
Which is a football field, yeah.
Right. Uh, what's, what, what kind of, what's saying that in five years from now, if you do not get a tenant like Publix, that you wouldn't come back and want that, another CUP or an additional, add additional into your mini store?
I got the answer. You ready? It's already written in at number ten. It says it lasts for five years, and it expires. It's already there.
All right, so in five years, it just goes away?
I think you could, conditional use would go away, as I, as I read, read it in, um, the ten, look at number ten. It says for five. But let me tell you something. I, I find that hard to believe, that for five years, nothing would go there. I, I can just tell you as a realtor what I'm seeing. People are fleeing areas that they're concerned with, and my phone has jumped off the hook. So, it's going to come to New Kent. The question is, uh, do we want nice things for people to have or not?
I, I can't believe that a mini storage would make a supermarket come.
I'm not, forgive me, I didn't mean to say that. If that's what I said, I miss, I misspoke. That's not what I meant to tell you. I'm telling you that, that both of them are viable businesses. Both, both of them are allowed in your county ordinance. I don't, it's not a hand grenade factory. I mean, it'll, that, the mini storage in itself will cost more than a million dollars. You just can't make something ugly, and people won't come to it. You're already making so it can't be seen. I'll agree to that.
Madam Chair, a question for county attorney. Uh, on Condition Ten, say if the, the mini storages were built, and after five years, nothing has been done on the commercial side, does that mean that is null and void as well? I mean, with the conditional use in on that? Or as soon as it starts, construction is, or the conditional use run with it from then on out?
I think if he's, if he, if he starts and gets a conditional use permit in the CO for the, uh, mini storage, then within the five years, then that conditional use permit is approved. It's going to be hard to take it away once he's built it and constructed it. If he, if it's not phased, and he doesn't then build the, uh, retail space within the five years, then he won't have the permission to build the retail space. So, he would have to, if he then wanted in six, year six, to build the retail space, because you got a bu- a, a, a business to come in, you would have to reapply for a conditional use permit. That's how I read that. If you wanted to make this different, then you would have to specify that.
Forgive me, sir, if I may. Um, it's already allowed by right to build business that's already zoned, that's already there. The only thing we're talking about is the fifty thousand square foot building, which, which, according to our county ordinance, if it's over thirty thousand square feet, you have to get this permit. That.
Correct. I, yeah, we're saying the same thing. If you wanted to build, uh, a building by right under thirty thousand square feet, you could do that anyways. If you wanted to build a, a, a retail above thirty thousand square feet, and you didn't have the, you didn't do it within five years, then that, uh, uh, permission granted by the CUP would be, would be, uh, exhausted. So, you'd have to come back. But that's if it's not, that's if it's not phased. So. Yep.
Madam Chair? It would, it would seem to me that, you know, looking at the way this is designed, with the mini storage behind and the shopping center in essence in front, that with the setback of three hundred feet and that amount of vegetation as a buffer, it almost would seem to me that it doesn't really matter when he gets around to building the shopping center, because the, the view of the mini storage is going to be blocked, other than the driveway entrance to it. Setback, like you said, a football field. Um, if, if, I would, I would say that if, if you're opposed to the entire project, I could see, you know, voting it down. But the phasing that he's looking at and, and the allowance for keeping that buffer out front, it almost seems like a moot point to me whether or not he ever gets around to it. And I do, I do kind of agree that, you know, along that corridor in sixty, it's just a matter of time before there's demand for something to be there. Um, so, it's almost to me a case of, you know, you either want the whole thing, or you don't want it at all. And that's, that's my take on it.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Thank you.
Any other discussions, comments? Are we ready for motions?
Madam Chair? I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Lockwood.
I move to approve CUP zero one dash two zero Pocahontas Center Retail and Mini Storage Resolution R dash thirty dash twenty.
Ms. Watkins? Yeah, Ms. Liddo.
Sorry. Do you mean with the? With what conditions, sir? The ones that are in?
With the conditions that are listed.
Not the amended ones that?
I'm sorry. You're right. I need to add that, don't I?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Let me find that list. Do you have those, Kelly?
I, I believe that the requested amendments would be to amend Condition Number Three.
Thank you.
Uh, by reducing the three hundred and fifty foot setback to three hundred feet. And also Condition Number Eight, by eliminating the phasing plan, but including a condition or revising that condition to require, um, that no clearing, uh, will take place where the commercial area is shown on the proposed plan. Um, where the commercial area is shown on the application that was submitted.
Other than for the entrance?
Only land that will be cleared would be for the entrance and drive aisle, um, to access to mini storage.
Because this, I, can I, may I ask a question, since we have a call for the?
Yes.
So, my question becomes this. So, why would we change Number Eight?
Because we're not going to require the phasing. We're not going to put a requirement for the first phase to be built out before the, uh, storage units are built.
So, we have enough faith to believe it's coming, but we don't have enough fa- faith to do a plan for it to come? That's what I'm understanding. I'm just asking.
I, I think that even with the buffered area of three hundred feet with a setback like that, that it's, it's not even going to be really visible other than a sign out front. So, you know.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, I, also, I can see where Mr. Daniels coming from, you know, for her, him to supply us with a architectural design. I mean, you're talking about spending thousands of dollars for something that he doesn't have any clue if it's going to be approved or not. Well, I think that's why he hasn't presented anything. Am I right? Any more than what you've had.
Hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars is the estimate for the engineering cost. That's not digging anything from, from start to finish. And let me just hold on before, this, we've already gone through this process at this podium. Someone went through a year and did it all, and then you know what? They got turned down. I mean, that's, I'm willing to do it all. I'm not asking for any shortcuts. But, um, again, there has to be some, a, a reasonable assumption that you're going to allow it. I'm not asking you to, to do anything but give me the, the ability to try. You know, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars was the, the, the most expensive estimate.
Thank you.
Ms. Lockwood?
So, I guess I need to adjust my motion a little bit. Madam Chair, I propose that we approve CUP zero one dash two zero Pocahontas Center Retail Mini Storage Resolution R dash thirty dash twenty, with the modifications to the restrictions. Item Number Three, the setback changed from three hundred and fifty feet to three hundred feet. And the phasing option be taken out and replaced with the requirement to leave the vegetation and growth that is there now, other, with the exception of the entranceway and driveway required for access to the mini storage.
Okay, you heard the motion. I hope you understand it. Ms. Watkins, will you poll members?
Mr. Evelyn?
No.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
No. Thank you. And Number Three is public hearing, Application CUP, um, zero two dash two zero Compton Kennels, Commercial Kennel, Dog Boarding, Training and Grooming Facility, Resolution R dash thirty-one dash twenty.
Okay, that's me again. All right. Switching gears, I guess. All right, I'm going to give a brief presentation on this use permit, which is for a commercial kennel operation. And the applicants, Brandon and Tricia Johnson, are in the back, and he'll also be speaking. Mr. Brandon Johnson has requested a conditional use permit to construct and operate a commercial kennel, dog boarding, training, breeding and grooming facility on a currently vacant property on Stage Road in Lenexa. The property is basically located across Stage Road from Mountain Laurel Grove, and a map's included in your packet. The property is Zoned A1 Agricultural and is fifteen acres in size. Section ninety-eight dash sixty-two of the zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit to be obtained for commercial kennel operations. Another fifteen acre parcel is located directly south of the proposed kennel parcel, and the applicant's intent is to construct a home on that parcel. The application states that the kennel facility will be set back five hundred feet from Stage Road, and the hours of operation are expected to be normal business hours of Monday through Friday from nine AM to five PM, with exceptions made outside these hours via appointment only. After consulting with the Health Department, a traditional septic system will be needed to handle the wastewater from the facility, and a traditional well will be needed to provide the water needs. All solid waste will be collected and disposed of at the New Kent Refuge Facilities. If the CUP application is approved, the applicant will move on to the site plan stage. At that point, the applicant will be required to address any environmental concerns and work with VDOT to make sure that entrance, site distance and spacing requirements are met. The standards for review of conditional use permits are set forth in Section ninety-eight dash seven forty-four of the county code and are listed in your staff memo. There are ten suggested conditions listed in Resolution R dash thirty-one dash twenty. When the Planning Commission considered this application at their meeting on July twentieth, they added to Conditions One and Three, and voted unanimously to send a favorable recommendation to the board with these changes. These conditions will assist in addressing, protecting and promoting health, safety and the general welfare of New Kent County citizens. Staff also recommends approval of the conditional use permit with the edited conditions from the Planning Commission. Mr. Johnson?
Just click, okay. Hello, Board. Uh, thank you for having me here, my wife, to, uh, do our presentation for the boarding kennel facility that we have proposed for you. I have a short, uh, presentation here for you guys to give you some reference pictures and, uh, an idea of what we're proposing on the site. The first picture here is a, we'll have a couple of different renderings, but we want to design a kennel facility that mimics a barn or pastoral setting, and then use it as a boarding kennel facility. So we will have a family-owned dog boarding business, training, breeding facility in New Kent County operated by myself and my wife. Our goals, we want to run a successful business working with and caring for dogs, live in a beautiful country setting, and most importantly, spend quality time together as a family. We plan to build a safe, high-quality facility drawing upon design recommendations from our successful kennel, other successful kennel owners, veterinarians, and from our own experience. Our kennel building will be constructed in a way that maximizes the aesthetic views. Value of the property adds to the scenic country views of New Kent and limit noise and land disturbance. Uh, just a little bit about myself and my wife and our daughter. Uh, I'm from southwest Virginia, Lee County, if anyone is familiar with that. I currently work in Richmond for Bonds Core, uh, and I'm an avid upland bird hunter. Uh, my wife works for the Public Health Laboratory, DCLS, uh, who's been very instrumental in the COVID response. I think is up around eighty-five thousand test kits. Hundred thousand test kits, uh, that her laboratory is responsible for building for COVID. Uh, enjoys being outdoors, nature, and animals with her family. And then our daughter there, um, she is my little kennel helper and dog raiser helper. She'll be in the third grade at George Watkins coming up. The facility design, the kennel facility will be set approximately five hundred feet back from Stage Road and will be designed to look like an equestrian barn in a farm setting. The main building will include an office, lounge, dog washing, grooming station, puppy whelping rooms, restroom, laundry, and break room, uh, maybe a few other kind of administrative things in that building. Behind the main building will be two elongated buildings. These buildings will face each other to be set perpendicular to the main building, limiting their visibility from the road and parking area. Each building will contain our climate-controlled kennel runs. The outdoor portion of the runs will face inward, creating a U-shaped courtyard design and limiting barking noise. The next slide will have a rendering of this so you can get a visual of what that may look like. We plan to, uh, further improve, as Kelly mentioned, we're buying the adjoining fifteen acres, and we plan to put our forever home across from there once the kennel business is up and running and designed. Uh, here are two more renderings, uh, of what our vision may be for the building. The, the bottom one there would be the, the main building, the entrance where we receive, uh, clients and have the offices, uh, restrooms, and those kind of things. Uh, the top picture there is a shed row barn style. That would be our two elongated buildings that would house the thirty runs that we're proposing for the dog kennel. Uh, and then off to the side there, that's the way that we see the properties in reference, the buildings on the property in reference to each other, creating that courtyard where the buildings are facing each other. Okay? Uh, and then there's just a few pictures of us, the family, the dogs that we breed and raise, and, uh, my contact information. I'll open it up now for Kelly comes back, or just questions? Questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Discussion from the Board? Mr. Steers?
Let me get unmasked. Uh, Brandon, the, the dog grooming, eh, will that also be open to the public and, and dog washing? Is that just for your use, not open to the public?
Initially, I see that being for our clients that are boarding their dogs with us, but I would not necessarily want to close the door on someone being able to make outside appointments from, just for the dog grooming aspect of it.
Okay.
Uh, I included that. I intend to do more training and boarding, but I realize with that business will usually come along the grooming and the ask for it. So I wanted to include that into the conditional use permit so that I wouldn't be hamstrung to just boarding and just training.
And, and with you training dogs, do you also know how to train them not to bark?
Uh, that's a hard one. Uh, training them not to bark is more about a spacing and the way that you manipulate the dogs in and out of the facility. So, uh, and the design of the building itself. If you have two open chain link fences next to each other, those two dogs get next to each other, they start barking. But if you have a barrier that's in between each run, then you eliminate some of the barking. So through kennel design, we could hopefully eliminate some of the kennel noise that we may have. And then with rotation of some dogs inside the kennels while some dogs are outside, again, we can, we can hopefully to curb some of the, the barking.
Okay. And then, uh, how, how do you go about disposing of the stuff on the grounds you don't want?
Yeah, the waste from the dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're going to collect that every day?
Dog poop.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll just collect it every day and, uh, we'll dispose of it in the refuge sites of New Kent. Dog waste does not break down the same way that human waste does, so it can't go into a traditional
Right.
septic system. So it has to be collected and disposed of differently. Water waste is fine, though. So that's where the traditional septic system would come in for urine waste and hosing down the kennels and anything that may go on with dog grooming, those kind of things.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, uh, just curious, do you breed a specific dog or, or any dogs? What, what are you typically going after with, with the breeding side of things?
I breed two dogs, a Vishla, which is the one on the far left there with me, I'm wearing a jacket, and then a wire-haired Vishla, which is kind of hard to tell, but on the far right with my daughter there. So there is a wire-haired version of the short-haired Vishla. The wire-haired version is a little bit more adept at, at duck hunting and waterfowl and, and a few other things. And the smooth Vishla is a little bit more for upland bird hunting. So I breed those two breeds of dogs and have no intentions of breeding other kinds of dogs. And, uh, just a quick note on the training side of it, the training aspect of training hunting dogs would be for upland bird dogs, not hounds or, or rabbit dogs or deer dogs. Uh, it would be for training upland bird dogs. Potentially retrieving dog every now and then, but mostly upland bird dogs.
And so how much traffic do you think this would create on that road, on Stage Road?
We are proposing to have thirty runs in our kennel facility with a maximum of thirty-five dogs placed on, uh, on the facility by the Planning Commission. Uh, so at most in one given day, I think you would have thirty people come in and go in to get their dogs, but I would, I couldn't imagine every day where thirty dogs would leave and thirty dogs would come in. So I guess maybe it could be up to sixty cars in one day, but I think that's a very unrealistic scenario where all of my kennel runs would be empty and then all of them would be full in one day, you know? Dogs are staying two, three, four days a week, two weeks, and they're overlapping with each other and in and out. So I think the impact traffic-wise would be minimal from my standpoint.
And you purchased, uh, adjoining land?
Yes.
And so how far would this building be from the other side, from the other, um, property line?
From the other property line that I will own?
That you won't own.
That I won't own?
Mm-hmm.
The, in the stipulations, it mandates that there's a seventy-five foot buffer, I think, from the other property line that has to be maintained. I think that it will be more than that, but some of it will be probably dictated to me via the Environmental Commission and where, where it will ultimately be placed. So I don't know if I can answer that one hundred percent for sure. But at least there's a minimum seventy-five feet buffer that has natural vegetation listed as the buffer.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
I believe that the Planning Commission, they also, you'd stated that the actual training of the dogs, I guess, in a hunting scenario would take place off-site. Is that correct?
It did not mandate that it would take off-site. I mentioned that some training will occur on-site, but I have access to other large pieces of land where a considerable amount of the training that I do will take place. So not all of my training for dogs would take place on that property. Some of it will. But I have access to several thousand acres that would, that a, a large portion of training would take place on.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir. We'll now open our public hearing. You want to bring me the other one? Okay, we have Mr. Tom Dirkerson that has signed up. So you come up, you have three minutes. State your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Dirkerson, one three eight four zero Stage Road. I live across from this site. There's two houses closer than me, but, uh, they're not here, so. I'm not exa- exactly against this, but I'm just concerned about the noise. And when I looked at the conditions, I saw the seventy-five feet and a hundred and fifty feet from the residential. Um, the applicant said he would build it five hundred feet back. That's kind of what I was looking for. I just didn't know if it was in the conditions, if Kelly, i- if they added that or not, the five hundred feet?
It's not in the conditions of this.
Can that be made a condition? Okay. I mean, I, I, dogs are ninety decibels when they're barking. They're loud, and if he's built seventy-five from, from the road, there's a house right across the street that's only seventy-five feet back. It's, so some dogs are as loud as a hundred and ten decibels. So the impact would be great. It, it's about two thousand feet to get that hundred and ten decibel, which is a golden retriever of all dogs. That's your loudest dog. To get it down to below sixty-five decibels. So there is a noise impact with dogs, and if one barks, they all bark. My thing I would like to see is, if the dogs are indoor a- a- at night, that's going to block the noise at night as a disturbance. Otherwise, he puts all this investment in, and you're going to have people calling the police about noise. So hopefully, the dogs are at night and sheltered. And that'll block a lot of the noise, but my concern is the noise that I think this facility needs to be set back from the road. Not for visual, because he's trying to do an attractive and setting and make it blend in. I have a barn that looks similar to his barn, so it fits with my property. But I am concerned that, believe it or not, German Shepherds are like a hundred and nine decibels, Dobermans are a hundred and eight. These dogs are loud. I'm not sure what he has control over what dogs are there, but my concern is the noise on this couple houses straight across from him that if he set back further, I know it'd cost him a few more dollars in gravel. And the dogs that are inside, I'm not worried about, but the dogs outside in the runs, if they have a solid, eh, a barrier of some sort. Chain link doesn't stop any sound, but if you have some sort of a wood fence along there, that's going to block the sound, at least during the daytime. I probably wouldn't hear him except when the wind blows my way at my house. I'm about two thousand feet away. But, uh, the thing about the grooming too, you brought that up, uh, that is a concern. I mean, a single-family detached house is ten vehicles per day. He's saying it might be sixty. But I think he was talking about people dropping off and bringing his dogs, but I would hope if he does do it, open to the public paying to give grooming, that might be limited to only two groomers at a time, so there's only two people coming every other hour. If there's some sort of limitation on that in the conditions, I would appreciate it, being that I do live like quarter to it. And thank you, Board, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dirkerson. Mr. Hathaway?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, we did receive two comments by mail that were asked that they be read in the public record.
All right.
Uh, the first comment is from Stephen and Cheryl Russell, and they reside at one thou- thirteen thousand nine hundred Milton Laurel Grove. Dear Board of Supervisors, we are writing to oppose the request for CUP oh two dash twenty that was approved by the Planning Commission on July thirteenth, twenty twenty. We believe the commercial kennel would be prejudicial to the character of our neighborhood. We believe that it would impair the value of our homes and property. The land is currently zoned agriculture and is designated as rural lands on the Comprehensive Future Land Use Plan, twenty forty. We have met with Mr. and Mrs. Brandon, and they seem to be very nice, they seem to be a very nice couple. However, this starts a precedence for other commercial use permits in an area, in an area that is currently agricultural and residential. Sincerely, Stephen and Cheryl Russell. We've also received, uh, public comment from Mr. Rufus Jones. Uh, Mr. Jones did not, um, provide his address, but his comments are, "My name is Rufus Jones. I live directly across Stage Road from the proposed commercial kennel. I object to your approval of this permit for the following reasons. Number one, this will result in lowering the value of my property. Number two, a commercial well with excessive water use could potentially cause my well to run dry. Number three, traffic on Stage Road is a hazard due to short distances between curves. The post office had, had us move the mailbox due to the hazards to the mail carrier. Number four, the county has other sites that already have the proper zoning. And number five, additional noise and traffic. I am unable to attend due to my handicap and being a caregiver to my wife. Thank you for considering my objections."
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Does all the comments, so we'll close our public hearing? As to what, if you have any other comments or discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm just, um, just curious if, uh, adding that five hundred foot setback as a stipulation, would that be, uh, a game changer for you? Because I think it might offer some peace of mind to your neighbors if they knew that the, that it was actually going to be set back, as you stated, approximately five hundred feet.
I came up with the five hundred feet using Google Map to the location that I wanted to set the facility. So I do want it farther away from the road than closer to the road, but like I said, that was an estimate using Google Map. And once I go through the permitting process and the environmental, they may make me move it, I don't know, a hundred feet or so. But I, I want the kennel to be recessed off of the property. I'm just a little weary of saying it absolutely has to be five hundred feet. I do agree that I want it farther than closer. I'm just worried about the impact of what the environmental or the site plan may come back, to see where I can actually put it. So, but I do want it set and recessed off the property. If I could address a couple of the comments, though, from, uh, from, uh, the gentleman that was here earlier, and the stipulations from the Planning Commission, I did agree to putting in a soundproofing barrier row of trees that people may have seen, the white cedar trees. The names escaping me right now to try to reduce the noise going across, uh, across the property lines. And the dogs will be inside at night. We'll have an indoor and an outdoor run, so dogs will be led out through periodically throughout the day into different facilities. But then during the day, I mean, during the evening, they'll be back in their facility. And I agreed to add certain soundproofing materials to the construction of that building to try to limit the noise coming out of those buildings. So we're, we're trying to address, um, the noise levels that I think would possibly be the largest impact on this. Uh, and again, like I stated earlier, some of the, some of the design of your building and the letting of dogs in and out at different times and not next to each other necessarily may also help curb some of that, some of that noise, but we'll, we'll do the best that we can on that. Uh, and Mr. Jones stated that this was not zoned properly. My understanding is, is that it's zoned agricultural, and this fits into an agricultural business. So it is zoned properly, I do believe, for the business that I'm proposing, correct, Kelly?
Yeah, the difference between zoning and use permit, um, it is an A1 zoned property that requires a use permit for a kennel when a com- when the commercial kennels are permitted use in business and industrial. So that's the difference.
Uh, and then, um, there were some water issues. Uh, I've spoken with a well company here that assured me we have two, two aquifers that we can pull from and that there is enough water in that area for... And I explained to them what we'd be doing and, and what uses we'd be having for it. So I don't think that that's going to be any more of a draw on the water aquifer than a normal house, or much more than a normal house would be.
Are there any other questions?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Steers?
Uh, it seems that Brandon and his wife have done quite a bit of research and seem to be nice people and get along well with their neighbors. I would ask that we, if we do approve this... I would ask that we, if we do approve the CUP, that we did not put any additional stipulations on it. Thank you.
Is there a motion, Mr. Steers? Okay.
I'm waiting for the public hearing.
Mr. Evelyn, did you have something?
No, nothing.
Okay.
No, they spent a lot of time, uh, looks like a good project, uh, be more than happy to, when you close the public hearing, make a motion.
Okay, um, there are no more comments, thank you, sir, we'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Evelyn?
I move to approve Cumberland Kennels R dash thirty-one dash twenty, application with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn, Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers? Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Okay, and item number four, establishment of a lifetime dog license and fee ordinance, uh, zero dash zero eight dash two zero, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board, you have before you ordinance O dash zero eight dash twenty, which establishes a lifetime dog license and fee to replace the current annual dog license, uh, permit that, that we require now. In two thousand seventeen, the Virginia General Assembly amended the code to allow localities to charge a lifetime license. Uh, our, our treasurer has requested that we implement that, um, and we are suggesting a fee of fifteen dollars uh, for the annual license. It's, and, and selecting a fee, it's, it's not really our goal to make money, it's not our goal to make money off of the fees that we charge. Uh, the fees that we charge are based on the resources that are involved in providing that service. And by moving from an annual license to a lifetime license, that will reduce the amount of staff time that's involved in the process. And that's why the, the proposed fee is as low as it is, uh, which is fifteen dollars. Be happy to answer any questions.
We have any question?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So will our new proposed kennel have to get dog license?
Yes, they will, they will need a kennel license, um, I imagine, um, yes. And it, it depends on, I, I didn't catch how many dogs you would be storing, they're not, they're not your dogs though, so. They would not need a kennel.
Right.
Right.
Right, okay.
Um, unless they have thirty dogs.
Right, got you. Thank you.
Yes.
Um, so, um, I heard you say we're not supposed to make money, um, so, and did you, did you say this would reduce, um, staff, staffing?
Yeah, well, it, it, it reduces, um, staff time
Okay.
that's involved in the current process. We also don't have to order as many license, um, permit, the tags that, um, we currently order annually each year with different colors for, for dogs. It would reduce our equipment costs as well.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Hathaway?
Madam Chair, so this would go in effect January one, twenty twenty-one?
This would go into effect January first, uh, twenty twenty-one, therefore, um, those lifetime, uh, license would have to be purchased prior to February first.
So don't they check their, their vaccines and all of that?
You know, that, that, that was the first, I guess, question that I had when this was proposed, uh, but in speaking with the treasurer, um, he has a process in place to ensure, uh, that dogs are being vaccinated, um, the vets are required to send, um, a list to the treasurer's office of all dogs that have been vaccinated, and he'll be able to run that list against, uh, the list of dogs that he has issued lifetime license for.
Any other questions, discussions? Thank you, Ms. Hathaway, we are opening a public hearing. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. We have Isabel Jarvis to sign up, ma'am, if you could come and state your name and address, please, you have three minutes.
I'm Isabel Jarvis, I live at Do it work? I'm Isabel Jarvis, I live at eighteen-nine-ten Lynn Lake Road, Burnsville, Virginia. I oppose this completely. I think we pay enough taxes to have a, work with a thing like this always done, it hadn't had any problems before. And I'll be eighty and we've done it, now how you gonna find these people that don't show up with any of the dog license or anything? You're gonna put more on the sheriff, more on the veterinarians, more on everybody, and if you go in a veterinarian's office to get a grooming, you can show your nice little bill, you've gotta have all these tests and everything. It ends up sixty-nine dollars before you even walk in there, and the grooming is fifty, so you're gonna put a lot of pressure and a lot of thing on the county, on the people that got dogs, and they'll never show up with them, and you won't search for them. So we're gonna have more dogs without rabies and everything else, if you have to buy that license, you know those people are participating. And we've been doing it for years. And if we put this on here, we're not gonna have them doing it anymore. So I think we ought to continue like we are doing right now, and I think you get enough taxes out of me that you can pay that others after. So I don't think we should let them come in here, how you gonna find these people? If they've just been and had them vaccinated, how you gonna know these people do or don't have them? If you've never been bitten by a dog that hasn't, doesn't have a rabies thing, those shots aren't too much fun. So I think we should leave it like it is, and let those people in the office do a little work. We've always had it, it's never been a problem. And you don't have to go searching for the dogs. I've got one in the house now, I suppose she had puppies, but she won't, but how you gonna find all them dogs? How you gonna make people take them to the vet and all that stuff when the bills are this high? I can tell you what they make you do, he did it today, so they wanna know if you have the stiffer, rabies, water talent, heartworm, Lyme's disease, a flu vaccination, parasite test, annual lab work, wellness exam, and other, everything. So when you take them to the vet, that's what you gotta do. Plus you pay your fifty for your grooming, so it's sixty-nine plus, these people aren't gonna take those dogs to the vet. If you're gonna have all that stuff to go to the vet, to walk through that door, they're not gonna take them, you know that. And you gotta find them, so you gotta have the sheriff's department looking for them. It's not like it was, and when you have to buy a license, they know you gotta have that license, and they'll pay it. And they can take them to the courthouse and have them vaccinated or whatever, these, these people that got hunting dogs, Lord help you. Cause you're not gonna find them. And you can't identify a dog and say that belongs to you. How ca- how can you do a, a test and say it belongs to him or belongs to me, you can't. So we need to leave as is and don't follow suit with everybody else because nobody wants to do this. So I oppose it completely, thank you.
Thank you so much. I do have a question for our treasurer. And so Ms. Jarvis brought up a good point, how do we know when the dogs are getting their vaccines and how do we find the dogs?
Well, right, that process wouldn't change with what we're currently doing, cause right now the vets send us any dog that gets a vet, a shot, a rabies shot in the state, we get notified of it. We got a notification from a vet in Virginia Beach today from two dogs in New Kent that were vaccinated. That will not change, we'll still get those notifications of every dog, every dog owner that lives in New Kent County, we will still get notified from the vet. They're required by law to do that. There's, there's no, I mean, there's no change there.
I'm, I'm curious too, uh, what is our procedure now when somebody has a dog, had tags last year, and didn't renew the tag this year?
If we, if we get that notification from the vet and they're not in the database that they bought a dog tag, we send them a notice.
So we already have a procedure in place for non-compliance regardless of whether you were sending out another tag or not?
And we get, and that notice it says, I believe it's thirty days, if they don't buy a license, we send the list to the animal control. So that's what we do right now, and that's really no change. We'll still send out those notifications, if we get a vet rabies vaccination report that has a dog on it, it's not licensed, we'll still send those letters out to the dog owner saying they need a license.
What about the dogs that are currently licensed, but you haven't gotten a notification of vaccination?
Their, their, if their vaccination expires, their county license will be null and void.
Would they have to renew or just get the shots?
The way the ordinance written down, no, it's no renewal, as long as that vaccination is current, their county tag is current.
Any other questions? My question is, how about the people that had dogs that don't take them to the vet?
That's when animal control picks them up, that's, that's when they find out they haven't had a rabies shot, I mean, that's pretty much your only, only
Yeah, we wouldn't know that now.
Yeah.
We have no way of knowing that right today.
So the person doesn't wanna get the rabies shot for their dog until they get picked up by animal control, it's nothing that we can do until we find out, is that correct, uh? Chief W.
Our officers, if they responded to a dog running at large, they would attempt to identify the owner and then confirm all the, the, the rabies license is current, the county tag is, is current, a- and that would continue, you know, where a dog bite situation, they're gonna confirm that everything is, is valid, and if not, they can warn or, or summons. So that, that would not change from what we're currently doing.
Any other questions? We close public hearing? We ready for motion, any other discussion, comments, we ready for motion?
Madam Chair? I move to adopt ordinance O dash zero eight dash two O to establish a lifetime dog license and fee.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn, Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Thank you. Now we will move to, um, appointments, do we have any appointments, uh, de- delegated by district? Mr. Lockwood? Mr. Steers?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Tiller?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Evelyn?
No, ma'am.
Um, appointments not delegated by district? Mr. Lockwood? Mr. Steers?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Tiller?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Evelyn?
No, ma'am.
All right. We move for adjournment. Ms. Watkins?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. And meet, our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be at six o'clock PM on Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty, and the next work session will be at nine AM on Wednesday, September the thirtieth, twenty twenty. Both will be held here in administrative, um, building in this room, there will be no August work session. This meeting stands adjourned.